Good evening. This is the Groton Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, August 28, 2017. Welcome, everyone. This evening's meeting will have a public comment period after a multiple announcements, if there are any, followed by a town manager's report. We will discuss the selectmen's agenda schedule, consider ratifying the following appointments of the town manager, Victor Sawyer, as a police officer, and Jacqueline Stiles to the Groton Country Club staff. We will then review town council's opinion on adding anonymity clause to the investigation policy, then review the town manager's recruitment and hiring procedures, consider appointing Linda Moore to the Sergeant's Speech Committee, and the fourth quarter final update for FY17. Under other business, we'll have a discussion on how to address interest in Groton as a location for cultivating and dispensing marijuana. We have liaison reports, followed by minutes of the regularly scheduled meetings of July 17th, 24th, and August 7th, and then executive session meeting minutes on August 7th, followed by an adjournment.
Someone didn't like some of those articles.
I'm not sure which one it was.
They don't want you to take on the town manager's important role.
Somebody didn't like one of those articles.
At any rate, so do any of the selectmen or the town manager have any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I just want to remind everybody that the warrant for the 2017 Fall Town Meeting that is going to be held on October 23rd, the warrant closes at close of business this coming Thursday, August 31st at 4:00 PM.
How many articles do we currently have?
Seventeen or eighteen.
Okay. So, Barry?
So, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the fire station, there is a recruiting event for the Groton Fire Department. This is an opportunity for anybody to show up, whether you are thinking about it now or the future, to come and learn and listen and understand what it means to be part of Groton's public safety efforts and how Groton benefits from a call fire department as well as full-time staff. So, please, if you're thinking about it, no obligations, Steele assures me he will not make you a fire person that moment, but please come learn and understand and just be interested in what you can offer our town. We appreciate that.
Anything from anyone else? Now, a public comment period where you have an opportunity to come to the microphone, state your name, and up to three minutes, tell us what's on your mind. Mr. Press?
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Hi, Press. For those of you that come to the selectmen's meeting quite often, you know sometimes it gets kind of deep in here, and I thought to myself, Mark really needs a shovel, really needs a shovel. Then it hit me, he has a shovel. He's got a chrome shovel from the groundbreaking.
I do have a chrome shovel.
At Four Corners. And, but the problem with that shovel, it doesn't have anything on it. It doesn't say why he has the shovel. So, Dawn and I got together and decided to have something on the chrome shovel, a plaque.
Am I going to be, do I want to see what's on the shovel?
So, we've had a chrome shovel here for you.
Very useful, actually. For you, anytime.
All right. It's been a nice thing.
You have a shovel?
Yeah.
He's got a gun in his pocket.
All right. So, on the shovel, we have a little plaque, and I will read it to you. July 26, 2017. This groundbreaking shovel was presented to Town of Groton Town Manager, Mark W. Haddad, in honor of his efforts with respect to economic development of Four Corners in Groton, Massachusetts. Mr. Haddad worked tenaciously in securing a Mass Works infrastructure grant of $2.1 million to fund the efforts at Four Corners. The residents of Groton owed Town Manager of Mark Haddad a huge amount of gratitude. He never gave up. As State Senator Eileen Donahue said at the grant celebration in November 2016, your leadership made this happen.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
No matter how deep it gets.
That's not Teflon, Mark.
I understand. I don't know what to say. I'm humble. Thank you very, very much. That's amazing.
Well, you gotta thank Dawn, too. We're trying to keep this secret.
Well, I had no idea. I don't have to talk to you about that. Thank you very, very much.
There's no question that one thing that Mark, amongst many things he's worked on over the years, is when Mark makes a commitment to get a project done, he goes full bore. And the first time around, when we didn't get the Mass Works grant, Mark tripled downed on his efforts and really worked hard with many other people here in Town Hall.
Absolutely.
And, you know, former members of this board of selectmen as well. So, everybody should be applauded on this, but certainly, that's a great present that you gave to Mark, and it's well deserved, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I can also speak that he did a remarkable job on managing the last part of the construction of the fire station because without him, a lot of things wouldn't have been completed.
No question. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any further comments from the public? Ms. Ellen? Somebody have a microphone for her?
I just want to remind people who are, who understand sign language that they can, for the town meeting, ask for a sign language person for, to be able to hear, to see what's happening. And also, the other thing I wanted to ask is, why don't we try to have somebody sponsor closed captioning for the town meetings? Not for coming, for the selectmen's meeting. Because it's said at home, sometimes it's hard to hear, even for me.
Can I ask one? A block? Is that even possible?
Yeah.
It's possible. It would take quite a bit of work to transcribe and to sync up things, but it's possible.
But if they do it at the same time, they need somebody to sponsor it, to sponsor the cost of it.
Maybe Verizon will give us some more money.
I'll talk to Bob, figure out what it takes, and come back to the board.
Well, thank you. And certainly, on the town meeting part of that, that's something that, why don't you follow up with the town clerk and?
No, we put that out in the warrant. We announce that in the warrant.
But it's on the warrant, but it's a small print, and you have to find it. So, I want to make sure people know about it.
So, if anybody is interested in that, please contact the town clerk or the selectmen's office, and we will make that happen. Very good. Thank you for your comments. Anything further from the public? Not seeing anything. We'll move on to our town manager's report.
Chairman, I'd like to move item five ahead. Linda Moore is here tonight, the Sergeant's Speech Committee, who unanimously voted to recommend that she be appointed to the Sergeant's Speech Committee. I'd ask the board of selectmen to consider ratifying, making that, this is a board committee, making that appointment this evening.
Any questions? Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Linda Moore to join the Sergeant's Speech Committee.
Actually, it's affirm the town manager's appointment.
No, no, this is your, your, your.
Is it ours? Is it ours? Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
What's the term?
It'll June 30, 2018.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for coming today.
Make sure you get sworn in.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I've appointed Jacqueline Stiles to the Groton Country Club staff. I'd ask the board to ratify that appointment tonight.
So moved.
What's the position?
Working in Pro Shop.
Anyone want to second that?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, one of our police officers, due to an on-duty injury, is forced to retire and go into a medical disability retirement, thereby creating a vacancy on the department. Unfortunately, to go through such a process with Middlesex County is very arduous at best, is the word they could use to describe it. It takes some time because of medical reviews and all sorts of things that have to happen. So, therefore, the police chief wants to be proactive and get somebody appointed as soon as possible to start at the academy so that when the position is approved and the vacancy is approved by the Middlesex County, we're able to fill that right away to save on a couple of things. Overtime, for one, and to keep us at our full complement of police offices, because now it's more important than ever. So, what we would like to do is appoint Victor Sawyer, who is currently a reserve officer on the department, and he's here tonight. Appoint Victor as a permanent police officer of the Groton Police Department. And the reason we need to do that is it's the only way we can get him an academy assignment. And we have to send Victor through the academy, and it's a 22-week?
Yeah.
22-week course for that to happen. So, I'll stop talking now, turn it over to the police chief, but we can answer any questions that you have, and Victor's here tonight. Victor, you've been a reserve officer for how long?
Since 2012.
So, he's been with us for quite some time, and he's well-respected, and he's done a great job for the department. So, Donnie, all yours.
Good evening, folks. I'm bringing, I call him Jimmy, his real name is Victor, but we all call him Jimmy. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Jimmy's been with us for five years, but he was raised in Wilmington. He attended Wilmington schools. His wife and child are here. His wife Sarah's here.
He's her child.
Sarah was the one that was sounded like me at the finance committee meeting. His son's name's Colin. Jimmy is currently employed at the Charles River Laboratory, where he's been for over 15 years in various positions. He's currently a corporate manager of corporate facilities. From an early age, Jimmy's always wanted to be a police officer and joined the Stonemass Police Explorer Group and put himself through the Reserve Training Academy. And even before he was appointed here, he was on the Bill Ricker Auxiliary Police, and we utilized the Bill Ricker for the, for the live, the fireworks. So, even before he was appointed here, he was here. So, he's not a stranger to any of us. He's been here for five years. He's an exceptional employee, he's an exceptional reserve officer. He makes 110% of the commitments, and I'm hoping that you agree that this is the wise decision to appoint him as a permanent police officer. The reason that we're doing it now is because I have to have his paperwork in to get him into an academy. The rules have changed, as the state always does. He has to have a permanent appointment before they will allow him into a vacancy. And the seats are coming up, and I don't want to be put in a position, if I can help it, where we don't have an academy available until March, which would push all the training out until this time next year. So, I'm hoping that you do it, and this gets him back up and running again for the spring.
One caveat to all that, so the board is fully aware. Obviously, we would have to stop paying the salary when he goes to the academy, and so there is a potential for double pay within the police department. But at the end of the day, we would probably save on overtime at the end of the year if we have to fill shifts, which, by the way, we've been filling for the last year.
Year. And to add to that, we were already into the process of the retirement. And although he said it took, it takes quite a bit of time, we're confident that we've got all of our background stuff, and our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. So, I'm hopeful that any double will be short-lived.
Yep.
Once he gets in. And Jimmy's appointment to the academy is not until the first week in October. So, that gives us another month to keep pushing the retirement board.
And at that juncture, that's when the salary starts, as well as the?
In October.
Once he goes to the academy, we'll pay him as a Groton police officer.
Questions?
So, Donnie, this is sort of an unnecessary question, because I know you run an excellent department, but I assume that if there are specialties, special areas of expertise that you need covered, that knowing what you would like your new appointee to do before he goes to the academy may actually be useful? Is that true? Is there specialized training that comes?
Well, he's going to get, he's already attended some specialized training as a reserve, but he goes through, this is basically, this is like boot camp for police officers, this academy. And the way that the state has things set up now, he's already done it once as a reserve. Now, he goes again, because that's the way the state has it set up. Once he's out, he goes into the patrol pool, all the uniform division, where he'll do a couple of years there, and then we start finding people's niches where we can train them up to specialties that they enjoy and they're good at.
Okay. Thanks.
Certainly, the reserve officer program has been excellent, so to speak, is kind of like minor league baseball, where you get the experience to make it up to the pros. And certainly, it sounds like having the background experience that he received through your department and the other departments has reaped benefit for your department?
Well, I would like to think so. We've done this a number of different times, the last three or four hires.
Three hires, at least.
At least three, more, I think four hires, we've pulled from the reserves. And I spend a lot of time with the reserve program, and I go back to many years ago when I was a very young sergeant, I went to a training class. And in old time, Boston superintendent said at that class that you hire hard so you can manage easy, and that's what we do. We put everybody through the paces at the very beginning so that we know. And as reserves, we have two years, maybe a little bit longer, three years, four years, to really take a good look at those people and make sure they're a fit. Training is one aspect of it, but the culture that we've established here for the department and the fit is what I'm really concerned about. And that's why we get to draw from quality people.
Excellent. So, anything further?
I'd ask the board to ratify my appointment of Victor Sawyer effective upon placement in the academy as a Groton police officer.
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, board.
Thank you. Welcome, board. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And now, I want my old one back. You get a brand-new badge. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Donnie. Mr. Chairman, the board had requested an opinion from town council on whether or not the investigation policy can address anonymous complaints. I've given you in my town manager's report, and it's up here on the screen, town council's opinion. Basically, he says that you absolutely can do that, but in his opinion, you already have that right pursuant to paragraph one of the existing procedure. So, I gave you a copy. If you go to page five in your, if you go to page five in your packet, it says under clause one, "If a member or members of the board are presented with a request that the board initiate an investigation, the request shall be reduced in writing and forwarded to the chair. If the chair receives a request for an investigation, he, she shall timely inform the other members of the request. Members of the board are not to engage in deliberation, discussion, et cetera, et cetera." So, town council feels that that paragraph one already addresses the issue, and you don't need to address your policy. If the board wants to take in anonymous complaints, you do have that right under this particular clause. So, I don't think the board really needs to do anything.
Yeah, I don't necessarily see it that way, to be honest with you. It doesn't mention anonymous complaints, so by not mentioning it, it assumes you can take anonymous complaints?
That's what town council is saying in his opinion. That's how I interpret it.
Thoughts by the board on this?
It seems to me that town council's opinion is important, but we should determine whether or not we want to allow anonymous complaints. And if we want to allow anonymous complaints, according to town council, we can. And if we do not want to allow anonymous complaints, then we have to take, theoretically, take some action. So, really, I think our focus should be more on what do we want and determine whether or not this opinion supports what we want. But until we have determined what we want, the opinions is irrelevant.
Further comments from anyone? Okay, so, then, we can take anonymous complaints if we want, according to town council.
Okay, but what do we want? Do we want to allow anonymous complaints?
The board should, I agree with Jack, I think the board should take a vote and say, this board will not accept anonymous complaints.
For instance, if we decide, as a majority, we do not want to accept anonymous complaints, then we've got to go back and revise our policy, because town council says, current policy does allow them.
I move that we acknowledge that our current policy allows for anonymous complaints, and that's what we would like. Second?
So, I, I think that there are two arguments that can be made, and they're contradictory. One is, and if complaints can be made anonymously, there is the risk that they can be made somewhat frivolously, and it's a little bit unfair. And the other argument is, if complaints have to be signed, there is a risk that we shut off important access to information that we should have. So, I agree that we should leave open the possibility of accepting anonymous complaints. As I think about it, it seems to me that it might be useful to have it clear at the outset that, and this, a complaint is anonymous or a complaint is not anonymous, right from the outset. So, that maybe means that at some point, we ought to look at some kind of a revision on this, but for the time being, I think we are okay as it stands.
Anything?
I guess, to me, I feel like there's a difference between a situation whereby a member is approached by someone in the public with a request for action or investigation versus, you know, kind of a no-return-address letter arriving at Town Hall. And I'm very comfortable with the first one. I think that the process is set up such that that, that, I don't want to say it's anonymous, because it's not, it's just a non-public kind of request comes forward, the board can discuss it, discuss it, and then opt to move forward or not, and that feels appropriate to me. The idea that someone could mail in an accusation of anything, I'm not comfortable with, so I don't know how we differentiate that, or whether we just, you know, kind of.
In both cases, someone has to receive it. If it's mailed in, presumably, it goes to the chair, unless it's about the chair. In both of those cases, the individual who receives it, whether it's the person who receives the written anonymous one or the verbal, has to have some amount of discretion in order to determine whether or not to advance it, right? So, in that sense, written and verbal have parity.
I don't think they do, though. The way it's written, where a member or members are presented with a request, that request should be reduced to writing and forwarded to the chair, that doesn't sound to me like there's any.
Well, if you're approached in the grocery store with a verbal request, who reduces that request to writing?
It's up to the board member to do it, unless the member who speaks verbally, you say, hey, you need to reduce this to writing.
Yeah, but if the board, if it comes in in the middle, in the grocery store, and the board member reduces it, it is effectively the same thing as an anonymous, being mailed complaint at that point.
Yeah, well, I think, I think to Allison's point, because the writing, the one that's actually written as a complaint is written not by a board member, but by somebody else.
Yeah.
And then, at that point, it becomes not the discretion of whether or not to write it or not, but to be, at that point, the written request has to be reviewed.
But it is, it is nonetheless advanced based on an input. The input happens to be verbal rather than written.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand what she's saying, and I understand why you're both saying what you're saying, and I understand why, where, and there's this nebulous area, and you're right, because legally reading this, the complaints aren't in writing, so it goes right. But I think that there is a step in place, Allison, that there's, any complaint that gets written in writing goes through a process, even if it comes in writing, via email, that it doesn't just go right to the board for an investigation.
But so, if it came in, a totally anonymous written complaint, I mean, the difference, obviously, is if someone approaches one of us in the grocery store, one of us knows who it is, and that person knows it's a real person. But if a letter comes in anonymously, it could be from somebody, you know, who doesn't even live in Groton, who watched our, for some reason, watched our meeting and doesn't like what somebody said. And nobody knows who it actually is, has made that complaint. So, I do see that there is a difference. For instance, a comparison is, I believe, that the Groton Herald will, on occasion, publish letters without a signature, but they know who wrote it. It didn't come to them without a signature. They, it came with a signature that asked to be left anonymous.
Well, I want to weigh in on this. I do not support anonymous complaints, okay? Not whatsoever. However, I do support somebody who asks for their name to be withheld from the record as part of their complaint. So, if somebody wants to file a complaint, they could ask that their name be withheld, or they could leave their name on it, but for me to take something seriously that is reduced to writing, that somebody wants to conduct an investigation, whether it's of the town manager or of a member of this board, then it needs a signature, or as far as I'm concerned, it has no credibility.
A signature, but.
Well, it may have, it needs a signature from who it's from, who's alleging the complaint.
Well, but if it was received.
If the signature is not withheld, they could ask that their name not be released and to be dacted.
Oh, but that signature be released?
The complaint be released, but we know that it comes from somebody who can be interviewed. You're not following, Eric?
Well, so.
Want to explain it a little further?
If it was a person in the grocery store who said, I have this complaint, and I don't want to be identified, does that person still have to do the writing, or can the person who heard it do the writing?
It could be done that way, but again, I mean, unless the selectman that initiates the complaint to the chair in writing and reduces it that way is witness the act or understands like that, understands what the act was, it's still hearsay, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's a different issue, actually. Can the complaint be based on hearsay, or is it some, should it be something that the person complaining actually experienced themselves? I think that is a secondary, a different question than what we're talking about right now.
That's.
To me, that all comes into play when the board has a discussion about whether to proceed with an investigation or not. I'm not sure that we need to have a concrete rule about that.
I mean, I think you can leave it just the way it is right now on a case-by-case basis. If we get an anonymous letter, we convene, we discuss it, and we see if there's any credibility. If we don't believe that it be credibility, we can dismiss it and not proceed with an investigation. We may be dismissing it without taking the facts under consideration, because we can't contact the individual who didn't sign the letter. So, therefore, by somebody signing a complaint that's forwarded, it allows us to at least interview them to see if there's any.
I have, I'm just going to say, I have an issue or a problem with a truly completely anonymous complaint even being discussed, because to me, that gives it a lot more credibility and potential damage that it shouldn't have. I mean.
So, let's be clear here. We're not talking about a complaint, because we get complaints all the time. People complain left and right about a decision I made or don't make. We're talking about a request for an investigation, and so that's different than a complaint. That rises to a different level, right? And if a letter comes in with a request for investigation, I consider that much different than if someone writes in, I have a problem with this, right? Or I saw this. If someone just writes a letter, say, I saw this, okay, great. But if someone writes in, I'm requesting an investigation, I think that rises to a different tier, and at that point, for better or worse, we do have to rely on the discretion of the chair and town council, which is usually involved in these things, to decide, you know, merit, is there anything, you know, to do? And then, the reality is, well, you know, it just, anything like that comes through, and perhaps we're encouraging it right now, will, you know, will be, we'll have a hard bar to overcome by the very nature of it. But do you want to prevent it? I don't think you do. That's my opinion.
So, then, the pleasure of the board is to allow anonymous complaints, and we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis.
You haven't taken the ball in the motion?
That's what I'm trying to figure out here. Can you read the motion back?
Move that we acknowledge our current policy as it allows for anonymous complaints.
Well, mostly, it seems to me like we've opened up a whole lot more questions here. I mean, I'm still troubled by the situation of an anonymous letter arriving, and if that has to be discussed at a public meeting, that I do not agree that that should happen. So, if the person whoever gets it just reports at a meeting, I got an anonymous letter and I decided there's no credibility, so I'm dismissing it, or, I don't know.
That's not how the process works.
I don't think it has to be discussed at a public meeting.
What has to be discussed at a public meeting is, we've received a request for investigation, and then, at which point, you schedule an executive session. And during the executive session, whatever is alleged as part of the request for the investigation is discussed at that point. And if it's against one of these members or one of our members, then that member can't participate in the discussion, but can listen to the discussion, because they have their rights to have heard an executive session or open session. Is that correct, Mark?
100% on target, sir.
So, I think that we either identify that we'll accept anonymous complaints, or we leave, stay silent to it and deal with it on a case-by-case basis. And if we see something's broken in the future, we can always amend and change it to include such language to qualify or disqualify that complaint at that time. Does that make sense? And?
I'm having trouble envisioning a scenario whereby a completely anonymous complaint kind of made it through an executive session discussion.
It would be hard-pressed, I believe, for to make this, that discussion, to get an investigation. However, that doesn't negate the responsibility to consider it.
Understood. I just.
Like you could come to me and say, Josh, there was a complaint against you as chair and, and, you know, I could say, well, I want that heard in open session. Let's go discuss it. Or I could say, okay, let's discuss it in executive session and see if.
But if the board can't envision a scenario whereby an anonymous complaint makes it to an investigation, then to me, it seems more appropriate to make it clear in our policy that we won't accept an anonymous request for investigation. So that the people aren't spinning their wheels, including this board.
I, that's why I said I don't want anonymous complaints.
So some, perhaps some revision of wording that says we would allow a complainant to not be identified, which would, that requires a new language.
I would be fine with that.
I, I, so that's what I think we're heading towards. So maybe Barry.
I think, first of all, I think if you, if you have discussion, you're, you're gonna have notes about a complaint and they're gonna, you're gonna identify some of the notes eventually the documentation goes out. I, I could see something coming to the board. There's a complaint that Petropolis is getting away with not paying fees down at the transfer station. And it comes to the, um, board and the board says, says, you know, we really do need to look into this and Petropolis says, I'm not doing it, but go for it. And you, then you ask the chair or the town manager to speak to the highway supervisor or to figure that out. And the highway supervisor comes back and says, yeah, he is, or there's reason to believe this, or no, he's not. I could see that happening. I, I think it should.
I, I, I think we.
Are you alerting us to something, Jack, that I need to?
I think the, the challenge here is that we are in the position where we have to take these things seriously and people are in positions to abuse that reality that we have to take them seriously and that we have to look into things because that's our job. And that's, you know, we have to hold ourselves and our, and people that work with us and for us to high standards. And that's the reality of public service sometimes. And it's not necessarily always the happy face that, that you see. And if that means that everyone's fault, someone's gonna throw a, a crazy, um, paper bag and light it on fire in front of the door and, and you have to, you know, you have to, you have to figure out what that is.
That power your shovel.
You know?
No, you can't help it.
To bring forward nothing, then you still have to go through it and you still have to go through the motion. You still have to do the job because you always do the process because you always make sure that you're following the reality that something could be true because the one time you ignore something or don't allow it and you don't have something and it comes back later, it's a scandal or a bite in the face, I just don't think that's okay. And I, I, I recognize that there's, there's, there's opportunity for, for abuse, but there's opportunity for abuse in everything. That's where five members have judgment and hopefully, you know, you have sixty percent of those people, I'm sorry, three out of five of those people that, that have good judgment and, and, and there you go, so.
So are we suggesting, are we suggesting that we leave this alone right now and see how it goes and if we?
So the motion was seconded, yes.
Yes. Okay, so there's a motion, uh, to leave things as they are.
Do you still have a comment, Connie?
Yeah, Connie. Sorry, Connie.
I'm hearing complaint and investigation used somewhat interchangeably here. And it would be helpful if you could explain the process. So if someone issues a complaint, that does not necessarily result in an investigation.
That's correct.
You just answered it.
Okay.
That's correct.
If somebody issues a complaint and as part of that complaint requests an investigation, that's when we proceed to the investigation policy.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Everybody agree on that?
Thank you.
So there is a motion. It has been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those against? No.
No.
So that's three in favor, two against.
Mr. Chairman, the board requested I provide you with a summary of my recruitment hiring process for both department heads and non-department head employees. I've given you a summary, uh, under item number four. If you'd like, I could read it into the record.
I think you should.
Okay.
It's important and let the public know how it currently works before we decide if it's not broken, don't fix it.
When a vacancy occurs for a department head who works for a board committee, I provide the board committee along with the board of selectmen a proposed recruitment process. The first step in the process is to determine where to advertise the, the position. We advertise all positions with the Mass Municipal Association, either on their website or the print edition. And that depends on the timing of the printing of the print edition, obviously. The vacancy is also posted on our website and advertised on Indeed, Monster and, and the Groton Herald. We also post the vacancy within trade magazine websites related to the position. And I've given you an example. For example, the recent conservation administrator vacancy was advertised in the Mass Association for Conservation commissions. Once the, uh, that is taking place, I appoint a search committee made up of myself, the human resources director, a member of the board of selectmen, a member of the personnel board, one or two department heads that work closely with that position. And for example, should the vacancy be the treasure collector? We have the town accountant and the principal assessor who participate in the, uh, search committee. Uh, Don Dunbar also serves on all of those along with a member or two from the board of committee if applicable. Then based on that, the town manager, the human resources director and a member of the board of committee, uh, screen the resumes to determine who'd be brought in for preliminary interview before the search committee. If anybody in the search committee wants to see all the resumes, those are provided to them as well. The search committee conducts the first round of interviews and chooses up the three finalists to move forward, uh, with the process. The next step depends on whether or not the position reports to a board committee. If this is the case, the finalists are sent for public interview before the board of committee. Those finalists are then ranked by the committee and a recommendation from the committee is made to the town manager. The next step is for the finalists to be interviewed by the department heads. And the reason that I do that, and this is very important, fit within the organization is crucial to, to us. And so we like to, to have the department heads do, do an interview and we get to see the person's personality, how they interact with the other employees. And this has been very key in some of the decisions that we've made, uh, in terms of, of hiring. Once all of that is done, I take all of that input into consideration and I make a decision on, um, who to appoint, obviously subject to ratification by the, uh, by the board of selectmen. Prior to bringing that appointment to the board of selectmen, the selected candidate is subject to a thorough background check conducted by the police department. That to me is a, is a key aspect. We really get to the bottom of things and understand the, the person before we bring them, uh, to, to the board. And then, of course, reference checks are done in addition to that by the, um, by the human resources director. With regards to the police chief and the fire chief, uh, appointment, the town manager is required to bring two finalists to the selectmen. So we follow that same process that I just went through, but we also add two additional steps, which we did, and the fire chief is the most recent example. We did an assessment center that the board of selectmen did. And I also have a panel of, um, various fire chiefs and police chiefs that come in and interview them as well. That was a very key part of the process because not only does the search committee interview them, but I have a panel of experts interview them as well. And that was, Josh, you participated in the, in the fire chief search. That was a very important aspect, part of that, that process. With regards to non-department head process, it's a lot simpler than, than the department head, obviously. All vacancies are advertised on Indeed and Monster and the Groton Herald on our website. In some instances, we also advertise in the trade magazines, similar to department heads. For example, the recent vacancy that we're looking for in the assessors office, we advertise that, we advertise that in the MAAO, Mass Association of Assessing Officers. A search committee is made up of the human resources director, the department head that oversees the position and other related department heads. Uh, for example, on the assistant assessor, I've asked the town accountant to participate in that search committee because she interacts a lot with the assessors office. Um, then the search committee conducts all the preliminary interviews and in this instance, they bring the finalists to me, uh, for consideration. We do background and reference checks are done. And then based on the recommendation from the search committee, primarily by the department head who has to work with that individual, uh, that position is brought to the board of selectmen for ratification. So you, you can see from this that we do a very thorough process and that we change the process if we need to, depending on the particular vacancy. And, and I, I would say that it is very, very thorough and I think we've really done a good job recruiting, uh, employees for the town of Groton. So that's what the board asked for. That's the process.
So that's what we're doing now. And I'd like to go down the board and see what we all think about how we're doing things now. And we'll start with Alison and work our way towards Jack.
I wish I'd picked a seat in the middle a few months ago.
Prefer I start with that?
Alison, I can. Um, I mean, I think that this is, is great to me, um, and I'm probably a little policy crazy. I would love to see this captured in a policy so that new members have something to refer to, um, in terms of expectation. The only piece that I see that's kind of omitted from here would be guidance. And again, I don't think it needs to be a rigid thing in, in each step, but when there is potentially an internal candidate, is that something where they're given, you know, do we post it internally for a period prior? Do we, would there be instances where we wouldn't advertise outside? How do we expect that to unfold?
Mark?
Alison, I, I appreciate that, the, the question. The first thing that I stated in here is I bring a search process to the board of selectmen when a vacancy occurs.
Absolutely.
So for example, with the principal assessor position, I brought you a process. Now, the board of selectmen could have said to me at that time, by the way, no, we want you to do a full-fledged search. If that was the direction of the board, that's what I would do. So I, I address that particular concern on the internal applicant at the beginning of the process. If I didn't have Jonathan Greeno, for example, in the assessor position and I needed to advertise that, I would have gone to the board of assessors. I would have outlined the process similar to what I did with the town planner. I would have asked for a member of the board of selectmen to participate. It would have been the liaison. In this case, it would have been Barry. And we would have gone through the, 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 the whole search process. With regards to non-department heads, well, actually, it's, it's, non-department heads within the, um, clerical union, it's required that we post the job internally for five days and then externally after that, unless the union agrees to do it simultaneously, which they did, by the way, with the assistant assessor position. The supervisor, supervisor's union contract does not have that language. We're gonna address that in the fall when we negotiate a new contract. Does that answer your question?
It does, just from my own understanding, when it, when it's advertised internally for five days and then externally, are they, are all the applicants considered at the same time?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not a.
And again, for example, timing is, is everything.
Right.
With the assistant assessor position, we had an internal applicant. That applicant was, was vetted and screened by the search committee with all the other resumes that came in.
Alison?
Yep, thank you.
Barry?
I have no problems or comments. I think everything's going to play. It should, and every situation is pretty much handled on a case by case basis, so.
Becky?
So I'm still not totally clear here. Um, what you're saying is if you're not gonna go through this process that is written here, you tell us that.
Correct.
And so what is the process that you use in situations where you're not gonna go through this process?
I would come to you with a brand new thing. For example, when, when the whole assessor issue came up, I believe I gave you this long proposal to consolidate positions, move things around. That's what you would get from me if I wanted to skip a process.
Okay. And when a position is advertised internally, where, is, is that what you mean, the town website or?
No, 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 no. It is actually physically sent to all the buildings and posted on the bulletin boards within the electric light department, the police station, the fire station, the library, the, the DPW garage.
Town hall.
Town hall, obviously.
So if, uh, following on Alison's question, if all the candidates are and then dealt with at the same time, what's the advantage of the five days internal posting before it's externally posted?
I didn't negotiate that particular thing in the union contract. It's been in the union contract for a long time. So I really don't know what the advantage is, other than we know beforehand that there's an internal candidate interested in the position.
Okay, and I don't think there was, well, I guess there was a mention of a member of the personnel board when there is a department head position, except in cases where you're not gonna go through this process, do you usually involve the personnel board?
We went to the personnel board on the assessors position and I asked for their opinion to bring to the selectmen before we did it. So the answer to that question is yes.
So it really, what, the way we should understand this is that we have a policy and that sometimes you choose to do it a little differently and we need to listen carefully when you're presenting the idea.
I hope you listen carefully to everything I say.
I hope so too. I know that you speak a mile a minute sometimes.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be funny. I apologize.
Yes, I, I understand now that I should be listening extremely carefully. Okay, thank you.
I think you just said you understand that we have a policy, but we don't have a policy, we have a procedure.
We have a procedure.
Right? So it's not a policy.
True.
That's the difference between a policy and a procedure. And this procedure is highly flexible. In fact, we've seen the most recent go around was quite different than what's written here. What's written here is, first of all, you premise this by saying, um, let's see, when filling a department head vacancy, I inform the board of the process prior to recruitment. And then you go out and outline the process and the process states, quote, "All department head positions are advertised with Mass Municipal Association, either on the website, blah, blah, blah." "The vacancy is also posted on our website and advertised on Indeed, Monster and the Groton Herald." The most recent department head position was not advertised in the Herald and the, um, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, in Indeed and Monster. Is that correct?
Because I came to the board and told you that I did not want to do that, that I wanted to have an internal posting, so I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, I'm very clear that you came to us and did that, and that's the part that I objected to because this seems like what's, what's written here is good practice, great practice. You're going outside and you're advertising. And I personally am in favor of that. What you did is you came to us and said, I don't, I'm not gonna do this. We didn't really have much of a discussion and you said, I'm going to advertise the person who works here. And I'll, I'll say that, um, it is very difficult for this board to sit and say to someone that we all know and, and see every day to say, you know, I really, I think highly of you, but I want to see what's available. It's very, it's a bad position to put us in because it's a bad position to put the employee in. And I think the purpose of a policy is to say, we don't have to say that. We don't have to be put in that position. The employee doesn't have to be put in that position. We have as a policy that we're always gonna go out to the market, find the best quality and that if an employee is, is a candidate for that, that employee will have a chance to compete with everyone else. And maybe even per Alison's point, that they have some advantage simply because of their internal capacity or their internal status. And I think that's a fine, fine thing to include, but the thing that I object to here is we're writing a pro, a policy or a process that we didn't even follow the last time around. So the variability of that is, in my opinion, dangerous.
Mayor?
How about it?
I under, I understand what you're saying, but before I would ever come to the board with that particular practice, I did my due diligence beforehand and I sat down with the board that oversees that particular department and I had a long conversation with them and we talked about it. And I would not have come lightly to the board with that recommendation without the unanimous consent of that particular board. The board of assessors were unanimously in favor of this particular point. And this is the board that works with that particular position. And going through the process that you saw, the board of assessors would have a very, um, important role in the hiring. Because they wanted to do that, I deviated from the procedure that I follow and came to the board with a new procedure based on a lot of input from a lot of people, including my finance team, that I sat down with and talked to them about it before I brought it before you. They were unanimous in support of this. The board of assessors was unanimously in support of it. And I would, I would follow that. The thing with the, with this particular process or procedure that I followed is if we have to be able to adjust. For example, when we appointed Takashi as the, um, as the land use director, I skipped the department head step in the process because they all knew him. So it would, would have been redundant to, to, to bring him in and interview him before the department heads. So if we put a policy in place like this, okay, I deviated from the policy, what does that mean? Does that mean the board can't ratify that appointment? I'm afraid that if you make the, if you put too much in writing and don't give me the ability to be flexible and follow this, we'd have problems.
The, um, the thing that I'm objecting to is far less the idea that we did or didn't meet with a department head. Oh, I think that's a valuable step and I'm certainly open to some flexibility. But there is a key issue here about whether or not we always go out to market to look for external candidates. And I think that's the part that while you write it here in the, in the process, and it looks like a good process because you say we, uh, the first step in the process, we always advertise on Indeed and Monster, that, that, that's impressive and then we don't do it. So, you know, if, if there's no will on the part of the board to require that we go external, to require that we go external for, for candidates, then let's move on because there's no sense in me flapping my mouth if we're not gonna get anywhere. But if there's some interest in doing that, let's talk about it.
So, before I go to you, Barry, my take on this is that you did a very nice job defining the process that you've used, and that I personally think that the process that you used could be turned into a policy, and that one sentence can be placed, or two sentences at the end, saying that this policy can't be deviated with a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen. That's my thoughts on this, because I've seen your hires over many years, and with the exception of maybe one or two, which were no fault of yours, not everybody works out in every position. I think that overall, the process has worked very well, and I am a process person about some things, and hiring is one of them, but you have to give a certain amount of discretion to the chief financial officer, town manager, in the oversight of the town, and that to prescribe something other than what he's written, I think is wrong. So, I have no problem with adopting virtually almost everything, as I said, that Mark wrote here, and in the event that we have a majority vote against the process he brings forward, then we follow the process of doing exactly what he said about taking it and advertising it in all of the forums that you have. But you will have times when you have an employee that we know has done a great job, that may well deserve bypassing the procedures that have been used in the past. And I don't think there's anything wrong with promoting from within if somebody's earned that promotion. So, that's my two cents. Barry?
So, I would really caution the Board against implementing a policy that's against best practices in hiring. And all the research, and I sent those links out for a reason so you could read best practices in human resource and human resource management and employment management, which says, every hire is situational, and you look internally first to determine if you've got the right candidates for fit, because there's things that you gain through that process that you do not gain from externals. There are problems with external hires, just like there's problems with internal hires. And every position needs to be looked at individually to decide, are you going to follow an internal process or an external process? And if you do not put that in the policy, and you just say, "We're going to go external every time," you're creating terrible practices, not best practices. And that's not somewhere this town should go, that's not someone this Board should promote. And that's based on research. And I sent those links for reasons so that hopefully people look at those links and recognize that the research is out there that shows exactly that what we did in this case, we took a situation and we promoted an employee who fit that model, and for exactly the reasons listed, it worked. And then there's another situation. We didn't have that fit, so we did a search process. It turned out we hired someone internally internally, but we still went through that process.
We did it earlier tonight. We took a reserve officer who was a known quantity within a department and took the advice of the department head, meaning the chief of police, saying that he knows the culture, he understands what's going on. There's a known quantity, and we promoted from within. It's very analogous to what was done in the assessor's office. And while I think that, sure, you could advertise every position that comes up and maybe come up with somebody who on paper is the ideal candidate, that reality sometimes has a way of getting in front of a perception that's through a resume or a meeting.
And if I may, just to jump on, piggyback what both of you saying, Victor Sawyer and Jonathan Greeno were hired as a reserve officer and the assistant assessor after going through a formal search process. So, they were brought on through a background check and a reference check and a search against many other people before they got to that particular position. So, I, Josh, I appreciate what you're saying, but I really don't want to put things in writing that procedurally-wise, sometimes we need to deviate from. Even if you put that caveat in there, you know, if I deviate in a little, it worries me. So, I'd like the ability to come to the Board, discuss things on a case-by-case basis, as I did with the assessor, as I've done with the town planner. I remember coming when Michelle announced her retirement, I said, "Hey, Board, this is what I want to do. Please tell me if this makes sense to you," and the Board adopted it. I did the same thing with the conservation administrator. This is my plan. I think, Becky, I asked you to participate as the Selectman in that particular search. So, I really like the procedure. It's worked for nine years, and I'd like to continue with that.
Let's see what Bud has to say about that.
Well, the Personnel Board did discuss this, and we, a matter of fact, I think we discussed it in one of the meetings I was here, that we felt there should be a policy on this. And to pick Barry's point and Jack's, we did not believe the position should be that you should just go outside all the time. We believe there should be a policy that was flexible, but it would also say that if you did go for an internal candidate, which is many, many times in any organization, there should be, what is the policy on that internal candidate? How do you do that? And then the other one is, you go outside and you can do either-or, but then there's the point when Mark comes to the Board, he says, "Listen, I'm going to do internal policy, internal candidate," because here's the policy. You know, by the way, this person was here, followed this, Board wants him, he's the right person, but there's no sense in spending money going outside because I feel that's the right answer, and so does the Board. There's a policy that says that. Or, we don't have an internal candidate, we don't have another accountant in waiting, and Trish moves off to a CFO job somewhere, and we need to replace that, so we need to go outside.
Congrats, Trish.
But the whole point is, there are two different policies because there's two different ways of hiring people. I mean, there's many ways of hiring people, but those are the two critical ways. And I think you need to have a policy that says, here's how we're going to follow, and what are the rules behind, I think Mark just, he said what he does under the internal rules of hiring internal candidate, but there's no, there's nothing written on that. And it's not hard. I mean, it's, to me, it's just, we agreed there should be a policy that's a general hiring policy, internal candidates, external candidates, and then you follow the rules, sort of what Barry said, where you got two different ways of hiring. Your rule, your way at the bottom, you could do it that way with that. My thinking is just to expand on one side. It says, if you're going to go internally, blah, 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 blah. And we were unanimous on that decision because there is two ways of hiring people.
Well, we do have a Personnel Board, and their advisory certainly to us and any employee here in the process, so we have a recommendation that we do adopt the policy on how we're going to move forward. What's the will of this Board?
So, we don't have a motion yet, right?
No, I'm just, at this point, policy and no policy, it's a straw poll.
So, taking what Mark has written, saying that this is our policy, but having the caveat at the end that says, when, you know, the town manager may choose to hire within, and whatever.
Would the Board's permission, the majority vote of the Board?
Right.
To deviate from the policy?
I moved the town manager work with the Personnel Board to come up with a policy, a hiring policy, to submit to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
That was easy.
It really doesn't have to be hard.
I'll second. I like that idea.
Further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Did you do that 10 minutes ago? Oh, were you a nay?
I said I agree with Bud, but I was, I was a nay.
So, that's unanimous. All right, onward.
Mr. Chairman, closing with my report is the fourth quarter financial update. If you go to page, thank you, Don, page, page.
Seven?
Seven.
I'm going to try and turn it sideways.
Exactly.
Oh, is that how it came on?
Yeah, right, so.
Ah, I'm sorry. Hey, now it's a MacBook.
It works.
It's just columns are top to bottom, so left to right. Right?
My life has been sideways for three weeks.
She's from the bottom on.
I want to call, I want to, I got to tell you, fiscal year 17, in the, how many years have I been here? Eight?
Nine.
I've done nine budgets in my three years or nine years here. We're embarking on the 10th budget. I would say financially for the town, fiscal year 17 was one of our strongest fiscal years in terms of revenues, in terms of the way the departments manage their budgets, and I'm very, very pleased with the overall finances.
I'll be your IT guy for a moment.
Oh, go ahead.
You're going to rotate the page that way.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, can we all do that?
Yes, so click on this little, little settings icon. No, 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 I'm going to teach you, not do it for you. I do it for him because he can't do any better. So, you're going to click, see this little gear icon? It's usually a setup or a settings type of thing.
Yeah.
You hover over that, and then under rotate pages, you want to rotate clockwise 90 degrees, and it'll reorient that page for you.
Thank you, Barry.
Magic.
Barry, you're so smart.
Thank you.
No, no, not smart.
Oh, all the other pages.
Well, we'll have to flip it back.
You'll have to get on the next page.
We'll have to flip it back, we're done.
Right here, this little one.
We'll have to undo.
I like the way Josh did his.
Now, you'll have to undo it, you know.
Right, right?
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Barry. So, just to finish, saying, we did really well financially. Revenues were way up. The one thing that we want to call your attention to is, if you look at the revenues on the other department revenue, it looks like we had $193,533 deficit. That is not the case. Because of the way we have to report enterprise income, we needed to make a correction in fiscal year 17.
Oh, yeah.
But you were correct in fiscal year 18. We were double-counting the revenues. From the, what we do is, we were appropriating the money from the enterprise funds, and then we were raising it on the recap sheet. So, we were doing it twice. Every town was doing that, not just Rod. I mean, it was a, it was a problem statewide, so the Department of Revenue came out with a new rule on how you account for that. We did that for fiscal 18, and when we file the recap sheet for fiscal 18, it'll be accounted for. But the money, we did get the money from the enterprise funds. It just looks like we had a deficit here, which we did not have. So, it'll be corrected, Patricia, next year on recap sheet. You won't see this sort of deficit on that because the money did, the money did come in. But overall, again, fiscal 17 was a phenomenal year for us. Very, very pleased with the way the department spent their money, very pleased with the income that came in, and I think we'll see a very good, you know, outcome when the audit is issued, their fiscal year 17 audit review, which they're underway now, right?
Yes, they are underway.
So, what about the real estate deficit there?
We collected 99 percent, 98 to 99 percent. You never get 100 percent income on real estate, personal property tax. But if you look up top where it says...
Oh, I see, percent of budget, right?
Yeah.
So, even though it looks like $192,000 deficit.
Yeah, it was only, it was still 99 percent, which is an unbelievable collection rate. And what happens, Becky, is if you look up on, I wish I could find the line, it's not jumping to me right away, but there is revenue that we take in from previous years when people pay their taxes in subsequent years. So, eventually, Patricia, what category is that on there?
When people pay their taxes.
Where they, it's a shortfall this year, but then they pay us in the following year, they make up with penalties and interest and everything. Where do we record that on the?
Penalties and interest.
No, that's still going to come in as real estate taxes.
Yeah, but there's, we also get the additional penalties and interest.
Yeah, that's penalties and interest on taxes, 23, 583.
Thank you.
Can, can we perhaps, instead of budgeting 100 percent, personal property, begin to budget 99 percent?
No, 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 you fill that out.
If it's state requirement, okay, that's just, because if we know we're only going to get 99 percent every year, why not budget 99 percent? This seems like a revenue thing. But I get, if it's state, then the state does crazy things.
When you do the recap sheet, it's based on 100 percent value.
Okay.
100 percent, your leverage limit is spent, that is based on 100 percent.
All right.
I just wanted to say that, I guess what I was trying to say is, we do collect penalties and interest on that $192,000, and you see we took in on penalties and interest and taxes, $113,000 last year. So, you do, you do make up some of that money.
Yes, you.
Year to year, correct.
So, basically, this is showing our free cash balance at $1,062,000?
Well, not necessarily.
No, that's just, that's just a budgetary position. This is a, this particular report is a budgetary report.
Okay, now you got it. So, it has not been certified, and that is not the number.
Nope.
And so, Connie, be careful with your pen, please.
Oh, I was just writing, just saving them.
Oh, okay. It looks good to me. I mean...
I think we're in great shape. And I got to tell you, Patricia and Bud spend a lot of time refining this report and making it more, I don't want to say telling, but more user-friendly for the Board to understand exactly where we're at, so I want to thank the two of them. But we are in good shape financially.
Library finds it down, huh?
Well, people are returning their books on time, unfortunately, Josh.
Very good. Well, thank you for doing this, Trish, Mark. It looks good. Keep up the good work. And any questions on the Board?
Does this document come out again once everything is certified?
No, that's the end-of-year report that Patricia gives to the, that's the report.
It's just a quarterly report.
This is not a free cash calculation. That's different. But that will be available. The entire free cash calculation will be available once it stays certified.
Okay. I'm less concerned with free cash, and I'm thinking about kind of what this would look like if we were to compare, you know, several years in the past.
It does that.
This compares two years.
Yeah, you can see 16, but...
So, if your, if your, if your budget, if your real estate tax collection fees are off by $190,000 this year, and you say, "Well, wow, that's a lot of money." You look last year, you see they're off by $200,000, or vice versa. You see that every year we're off by this amount, and so it's a seasonal issue. So, there is a one-year look back. We can, you can, we can go through that with you a little bit later, but there is that look back capability in this spreadsheet here.
And by the way, 99 percent collection rate is phenomenal. Thank you to the taxpayers of Rod for paying the tax bills. It's unbelievable. A lot of towns don't see 99 percent.
It only goes back one year, though, Allison. If you wanted to go back multiple years, that'd be a more complicated report.
Right, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking about as I, as I start through this for the first time, is it kind of taking this information and thinking about a budget for the coming year, which isn't our responsibility exactly. But, you know, it's not as simple as looking and saying, "Oh, this department underspent, so we can take money away." And it's not as simple as saying, "Oh, they spent more than we allotted them, so they need more money." But just if we were to be able to look at this kind of over five years, I'm wondering whether patterns might start to emerge so that that kind of would form opinions rather than kind of just based on one year.
Revenue-wise, we do a five- and 10-year look back, five- and 10-year look back before we determine what the, what the revenues are. With regards to the budgets, we look back three fiscal years, history where we put the operating budget together, and we give you a final budget. And, you know, we don't do zero-based budgeting in the pure sense, but we try to figure out each year what a department needs. There are things that come up in a certain fiscal year, and we remember that, okay, last year they needed $15,000 because they had a one-time thing. We're not going to give them the $15,000 this coming year because they don't need to repeat it again. So, it's really hard to do it based on averages. So, we do a pretty thorough search or look at each department when we're developing the operating budget.
So, the purpose of this report was just a management report, a quarterly management report. Are we on track? Do we have any surprises coming? And how does this, and we use last year as the comp for that. That's all that this is. With regard to budgeting, there are separate tools to be used, including the numbers that Mark puts out in his budget package.
We never used to do this, and Jack, I believe, was the one who had requested that this come forward, probably, what, a year and a half, two years ago, Jack?
We, a group of people asked to have it done, anyway.
But the point is, it shows the burn rate as well. So, you can look at the burn rate on a quarter-by-quarter basis as well, and like drill down from department to department to see how salaries are running and expenses are running as well. That can be looked at. So, if what you are looking for is looking at a FY '17 recap as opposed to budgeted, as opposed to expended, and then put that in a side-by-side analysis, looking at '16, '15, '14, and '13, if that's helpful for you, how difficult would it be to produce a report like that?
Not that hard at all. If you want to do it on, this report is by function of government, so it's really, it's from a fairly high level. If you want to go down and look budgetarily by department, it's just, you know, another level of detail down. We can get that off the financial software, it's for a quick salary, it puts something together. It's just, it's too much for the quarterly, I think, too much detail, but we absolutely have that available, and we can put some.
On a high level, though, like, just like this is, looking at a five-year trend, obviously, there's a lot of wild cards in there as to why, why these variances might exist. But it certainly wouldn't be that hard to produce it, I would think.
Well, but if you take, Trish has had this report out now for four years, I believe.
This quarterly's, I think, two years.
Yeah, but the years go back from, if you took your July, if you took your June, if you go to the June 30th one of 2015, Allison, you asked for that report, June 30th, 2015. That report has '15 and '14 on it. And then if you look at this one here, this has '17 and '16. So, these two, those two reports would give you '17, '16, '15, '14 in the exact same format, front and back, including wages and benefits. From that, Trish and Mark always has the explanation. So, you can get a lot of information that then asked back potentially, because it's already there. She just has to send you. I think that one report, the June 30th, '15 report, no extra work, it's already there. And that'll give you trends and lots of stuff that you can see. The main report is a quarterly report. The main report is a quarterly report so that you can compare the prior year, say, listen, you're getting off track. That's what that report is very valuable. That's what Jack wanted, this report to say.
Right, right.
In the first quarter, second quarter, you're off track. You just look and say, compared to prior year, no, we're in good shape. And that's the importance. But for a year-end basis, say, how you did against budget.
Yeah.
This is a great report for that, too. It's got all the detail by all the departments, by wages, et cetera. So, you do one report, you'd be all set, I think.
We'll look at this report a quarter from now and we'll say, within the police department, are we spending overtime at a rate that exceeds what we thought we would? You know, given the issues that we just heard about with regard to replacing an employee. And this is an example of that kind of thing. That, it probably won't reflect it much because it's a small piece in the police department, but it's an example of kinds of things we look for.
Barry came in a dollar on the budget.
Yeah, that might include a reserve.
Any other questions? Allison, do you have any?
No.
Any else? As we do the quarterly, it's been the practice of the board that we look at our goals. So, I've given you a update on the goals. With regards to that, if you start on page nine of your report, I'll get up here on the screen. As far as the mission statement, I would say that goal was adopted as the board did adopt a mission statement.
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
One amendment to that. I'm going to ask that on next week's agenda, next Tuesday's agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
I was going to talk about next Tuesday, the next meeting's agenda.
I'd just like to put it back on the agenda for reconsideration. There's just a small, a small change, so. The mission statement? Yes.
Okay. You want to wait till the next meeting, then?
Yeah, it should be on the agenda. It should be sent out.
Fair enough. All right. Well, you want to go through this, Mark, or no?
Yep, I'm going. I'm sorry, Barry's talking. As far as the strategic plan that the board was to do, I don't have any update. The process was revised. And if you look, it says, given the lack of input from existing board members, P's delayed work on this until after the May 16th election, at which time perhaps new membership will yield new energy to collaborate on P's for this project. So, I don't have any update on that. Has been any action?
No, I haven't, I haven't yet gotten together with Ms. Menugian. If you recall from our minutes of the last meeting, we decided we would sit down together and create a, figure out a phone, wow, launch this.
Can I ask a question? So, I've seen that this has stalled and I couldn't remember whether actually, in our last discussion, Allison had agreed to work with you, so I'm glad that she.
Enthusiastically.
I'm glad that she did.
Was it enthusiastic or?
I have this.
It's missing from the minutes.
I have this sense that it's important, that I would love to see us have a plan that somehow is comprehensive and overarching and helps guide us. And I don't feel like I have the skills to create that. I guess I also wonder, is there any group understanding of why this has been a goal that seems to have been hard to make progress on?
So, I didn't start earlier than this because we didn't have the consulting stuff back yet and I didn't necessarily want to proceed without that input.
Okay.
So, there was a, there was a legitimate delay on my part being unwilling to proceed in a vacuum with material that might come forward. Now, seeing as how that might be an agenda item in a future doc, I can't dis, oh, we're in open meeting. Since I'm disappointed with the strategic direction that that, that consulting group took, I now, and we are going to review that on Wednesday, I now have an understanding of what's come forward from there and then I can go back and we can create a process now. What I intend is to work with Allison on a process first. And that may involve reaching out to people in the public who have expertise in this type of thing and trying to get some help. But, but until we can develop a process and decide how to frame this, because this is a, as you say, I believe it can be a very critical piece of Groton's future. I, I think there's a lot of collaboration that needs to go in, even just to be, understand the process that should make forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, the reason I dally in doing it on my own, even though I'm sure we could have, was because I wanted to see the matrix report first.
Item 1C, the Modernization Act, that goal was completed. Item 1D, the boundaries with the town manager and the selectmen, two workshops have taken place with rewriting the policies. The follow-up workshop is going to be scheduled hopefully sometime in September to approve the revised policies. Allison presented to Josh and I today the updated revised policies. I'm going to put that on the next, I suggested we put that on the next selectmen's agenda for adoption. I think she did a great job going through that. And as an aside, Allison also went through every single policy and had some questions. So, Dawn, with the board's okay, Dawn and I will work with Allison to go through them and if any changes are necessary, we'll bring those back. But the final adopted policies will be on your, either next agenda or the agenda after that for approval. So, I would say this goal is well underway and well towards completion. Communications with the public, we essentially completed this back in May. There's nothing new to report. I believe we continue to have good communication with the public. Our Facebook page has many likes. We get 10 likes a day on our Facebook page. We advertise positions on there now. We've done a lot of things with it. It's been great.
I think part of this was also to establish an email list or an email opt-in. And you mentioned that Mike was working on that.
Still, still on the, I know you're selling more, it's that, still in the process.
Yeah, okay. So, so it said that we'd have two initiatives. We, it's hard to say that the goal has been completed where we can only really talk about one. The email subscribe or the notification subscribe might be one, but I would suggest that we keep this open.
Yep.
Identifying that as the second initiative and close it when that's complete.
And also keeping the town's website in addition to the Facebook page relevant and as up to date as possible.
But that's not new.
Which is the case.
However, I was going to comment that I think we are doing a better job of keeping important information there on the homepage of the town's website. There are things that I've complained about for years that I can see, like in advance notice of town meeting two months in advance. However, I still think that the town website is important and there are improvements. That quick links list on the list needs to be updated. I don't think civil war interments is a real, real pressing need to be there, right? At the top.
Civil war interments?
We'd have to ask Mike how many clicks he gets on it to.
If you look at the list, the quick links on the left includes civil war interments.
I've skipped that one.
Interments. And I was told at one point that the Prescott Municipal Committee could not be there because the list was already too long.
Okay, well, that should be addressed.
Developing a cohesive working relationship among board members. I think this board works together very well. We've had a couple of workshops and I'm very pleased. I think you guys do a great job.
However, it's not clear to me, are we going to have another workshop?
Well, the question, the question is, is after you look at the policies, if the board thinks we need another one, we'll schedule it.
I think when we set our goal and objectives. We should do in conjunction, which is coming right up.
Yep.
That, that should be, I don't want to draw this out over the course of a month.
Right.
Okay? If we have to set aside four hours to get this done, then I think we should set aside four hours and get this done.
And I think we should have an agenda rather than the workshops that we've had so far have been pretty open-ended, I think.
We should have an agenda so we stick to our goals going through the current years, which we're looking at now, seeing what goals we may want to add, as well as at that juncture, Allison will have her policies all refined with Mark and Dawn. That'll be discussed and approved prior to our workshop and that I think that we can continue on as to how to keep a cohesive working relationship on a continuing basis moving forward. So, let's do that then.
Okay. Josh, you and I can work on a date and I can, obviously, all five members have to be present so we'll figure out what works for everybody's schedule.
Yes.
The working relationship with the school committee, Budget Summit has been scheduled for September 13th, 2017. So, I'm very pleased that the communication with the schools is outstanding. And I'll tell you, I get a lot of communication from the current chair of the school committee. You're smiling. I think it's wonderful that she communicates.
Lena does a great job of communicating.
She does.
And I think it's really good.
Yeah, so I'm pleased with the relationship with the, with the school committee. We already accomplished our volunteers to serve. As a matter of fact, we hit that goal early on and I think we had another, what, five since the last meeting? Since the last update? So, we've been, you know, as a matter of fact, the finance committee rep, brand-new volunteer to the town community. He volunteered with the schools, but we got him on the, on the town side.
Is it possible for you to perhaps provide a regular update on the number of open positions available?
That would be good.
Sure, we could do that, right?
Okay, that'd be great. Or we should, it'd be useful if we saw that number go down over time.
The Archives Committee are looking for folks, always.
Okay, but we should know.
Now you know.
With the audit, audit implementation, we're having a meeting Wednesday night at 5:30 here in this room with the Audit Review Committee. So, that process is looking pretty good. Working supportive fashion with the COA. I think the board at their last meeting voted to include an article in the 2017 Fall Town Meeting to seek design funding. We've also issued the RFP. It'll be advertised on Wednesday in the Central Register. So, I'd say that goal is well underway. Okay, now my fingers aren't working. I don't mean to make anybody dizzy. We obviously completed the budget goal on time. Free cash policy.
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, please.
So, this is, should probably be a recurring thing. We will be doing presumably this again this year, setting a growth rate before November 1st?
We are trying to figure out when to, I have to work with the finance committee and the selectmen to schedule a joint meeting to give me my goals. But the first thing I need to do is meet with my finance team in the first week of September to actually start doing the revenue projection so you'd have something to look at for next year. So, we'll be doing that. We have a meeting next week.
Next week?
Yep, next week we have a meeting on the 6th on that. That's our meeting when we're going to go through the revenues and go through everything. And so, we'll talk to the finance committee and Josh and we'll figure out when to have that joint meeting. But that's, yes, Becky, that's an annual goal. Free cash policy, great progress on that in the last day between Jack and Gary and myself. We'll have something for the board in the next couple of weeks on that. And Bud, also?
I think we determined, Bud and I, that we would like to speak about that.
Okay.
So, we can organize that after.
Tuesday morning works for me.
When you say speak about that, you mean jointly amongst yourselves or at an upcoming agenda?
No, me, Jack, and Bud.
Yeah, we were responsible for bringing forward to the board a free cash policy. And so, that's done by Gary, me, Gary has asked Bud to do it instead, and Mark.
I'd love to see you be able to do that as soon as possible.
Well, we have something.
Because we're going into town meeting where we're talking about using free cash or free cash, certain entities are talking about using free cash and I'd like to see that policy in place.
Jack, Bud, tomorrow morning, not tomorrow morning, Tuesday morning at, a week from tomorrow, at 7 o'clock, the 5th. Does that work for you? If you want to do it earlier this week, I'm fine, any one of this week. Except tomorrow morning.
Can you send an email out?
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Regional grant, we don't have an update. I think Barry and I had talked about this. We wanted to wait after the August 30th meeting to see if we wanted to address any of that. There are a couple of issues that the auditor brought up that we'd have to investigate. So, we'll come back on that.
Where is he now?
We're under number 3C.
Number 3C.
3C, I'm sorry. And then 3D, the town financial policies, that goal was completed. And that's, Becky, that one is an annual goal as well.
Okay.
So, now we also look at the town managers' goals as well. So, obviously, with regards to the council and agent, I drafted the RFP for the designer services. I've also drafted the article for inclusion on the warrant. As far as updating your goals and objectives, obviously, I continue to work with the board meeting yours. With regards to the media, there have been no issues to report as of now. Audit, we already covered that. We both had the same goal on that. We're meeting tomorrow night.
Wednesday night, Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, rather.
Do you know Mark, is Matrix planning to be at that?
Yes, Rob and Haley will be here Wednesday night.
Let's do goal five.
No, let's skip over goal five.
No, let's finally do goal five. I'm going to get out a syllabus and a curriculum schedule. UMass Lowell for you.
Barry's already yelled at me about this.
Okay.
I have a suggestion, Allison.
I told you, you weren't getting out.
Because golf lessons does not qualify.
It's worth, that's a good point. It was worth a shot.
Did you try that?
Golf lessons? No, 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 worth a shot to get out of the goal, not the golf lessons as a goal. No, 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 no.
That would have been great.
That would have been fun.
I would have given you credit just forever.
So, my suggestion is, and I think we had talked about this as a goal, that, I mean, as something for our whole committee, that we maybe all could use a refresher on opening, open meeting law?
That was already planned.
We have that. I'm waiting to get back to dates from Lumber.
Yes, well, we're.
Goldberg.
That's coming soon to a meeting near you.
The, if I'm, the intent of this goal, in my opinion, was there's a lot of cutting-edge, you know, things going on out there and there's several organizations that specialize in public policy. And Groton's needs are changing and we have, for example, in my opinion, right now, we have a challenge with economic development and perhaps there's a class available on public-private partnerships around economic development that could, you know, be used for a town manager as a spearhead to bring those ideas and opinions and knowledge forward. So, that was the intent of my, you know, for professional education, as well as it's, it's good for Groton to have a town managers constantly staying current and being awesome.
So. I have a shovel here that says I'm pretty awesome.
What my suggestion is for you is that within the next four weeks, to come up with something to begin taking classes beginning in January of 2018 and that we're going to hold you to it this time.
Or earlier, if you find something.
Well, or earlier. I mean, there's a one-night pruning class at Prescott School coming up. Would that count? I'll go to that.
As long as you prune the budget.
And then Economic Development Committee. That was good. You know, as far as Economic Development Committee support, I really, they haven't come to me. I haven't gone to them, so I really don't have anything to update. Have you guys met?
No.
You have? Is there anything that you need me to do? Because I really don't have an update on that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Wasn't there, didn't we talk about having their whole committee come before us at some point?
Yeah, we got to schedule that.
You haven't done that?
Oh, boy. What?
The one thing? It's been scheduled and rescheduled.
All right, how about this? Why don't you get them on before the end of September?
Okay, please. And then as far as the final goal.
When will we be back, Jack?
We can talk about that later.
Loose meat for one and all.
We'll talk about it later, right?
We could conceivably, well, we'll wait till you go on to that.
Okay, so we'll get them on.
We'll get them on. So, as far as the superintendent, relationship with the superintendent, I, you know, have been working with her on collective bargaining. We've had a couple of meetings on the budget and I'm sure once the budget season gets underway, her and I will be meeting a lot more. So, I think she's off to a great start with the schools and I look forward to working with her. And then as far as the operational support to the police chief, the fire chief, rather, we're working closely with him and we're working on the next steps of the strategic plan. So, the chief and I and Barry will be working together on that. So, that goal is well underway as well. So that goal is well underway as well. So I'd say with the exception of Goal Number 5, I'm at 95%.
Yeah, but Goal Number 5 is worth 30%.
So that gets you to 65%.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I wanted to talk about tonight with the Selectmen is there is nothing scheduled for next week because we ended up, we weren't supposed to meet this week, and we were gonna meet next week. But since you met this week, there really isn't anything on the agenda. So if the Selectmen want to not meet next week, we do not need to meet.
But we just talked about a whole lot of things that need to go on to a future agenda.
When are we gonna do our goals and objectives, Mark?
And have a workshop, right.
When are you gonna do your goals? We usually do that at the end of September. Does that mean Tuesday and do it? You can meet Tuesday and do it. There's nothing else on the agenda. There's nothing going to be scheduled that night.
Yeah, my one item, it doesn't have to be September 6th, it can be September 12th, that's fine.
I'm fine with moving that on. It doesn't even have to be on a Monday night. It can be on a Tuesday or Wednesday night, having that meeting. But I would like to hear from the Audit Review Committee as well as our consultants. I think that it will have potential impact on setting our goals. It may or may not, but certainly we need to internalize the recommendations of the Auditors as well as the Audit Review Committee and decide where the Selectmen are going from there. And before we go to our goals and objectives, I think we should get that out of the way.
Well, that's happening, isn't it?
Which is happening Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
I get it. But I mean, we may not take a vote on that on Wednesday night.
My guess would be that Wednesday's Audit Review Committee will not yield any kind of final perspectives, and that it'll probably generate more questions than anything.
Agreed. So, that's why I suggest that. So, thank you for reviewing all of these. Any comments from any members of the public on what we just discussed?
Are we meeting next Tuesday or not?
Well, I'm asking the public if they have any comments on what we just discussed. Seeing none, are we meeting next Tuesday or not?
That's fine, that's okay.
Wait, so we have more business on tonight? We have this.
We have some minutes.
We also have a discussion how to address the question of Groton location.
Communities on reports.
And I have never totally understood when a Selectman is supposed to ask a question at these meetings.
Are you ready?
I'm always ready to answer questions.
Raise your hand and ask a question. Just try and keep it relevant to, you know, the agenda items, and if there isn't any.
Right, okay. So the closing of the warrant, and I think there was some discussion about some legal opinions about who could submit articles. And did that get resolved in a way that is at all parties who might want to submit?
I have not heard back. I sent out, I, last week, for the public's information, I sent an email to the Selectmen. This Board has always operated under the assumption, or under state law, which says the Board controls what goes on and off of a warrant with the exception of citizen petitions. And that's how we've operated for years here. And I got a question from a, from an individual that said, wait, look at this particular section of the town charter that says the Board shall include or accept from town offices, majority of multiple-member bodies, and citizen petitions on the warrant, and Department head back. So I asked Town Council, wait, this seems to be in conflict with the way we've operated. What does this mean? And it basically says the Board has no discretion on what goes on the warrant.
If it comes from those people.
If it comes from those people.
Yes. And the way, the way the new charter, which is not yet ratified, it changed the word "town officer" to be "department head."
Yep.
Because if you look under, if you look at the definition of a town officer, it's different than the definition of a department head. So right now, the charter says one thing.
Yep.
So we have to follow what it says today. But once it's ratified, it actually says something different.
Correct.
And we have to follow what it says then.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's a, it's a, but yes, it says that if it comes from any of those four sources, we have no choice but to receive it and tell the public it's on the warrant.
Correct.
But there are things we could, we otherwise have control over the warrant, just as long as we also allow those things to happen.
But it's your job to put out, the main job of the Selectmen is to call for the meeting, set the warrant, the order of the articles, and get it off so that it's done. That doesn't change. You're still gonna do that, still do it very well. So the second part of that, Becky, the second question to me was, well, is the Groton-Dunsborough Regional School Committee a multiple-member body of the town? The answer to that question is no, it is not, similar to the Housing Authority, even though they're elected, the Housing Authority isn't a multiple-member body of the town. Neither is the Groton-Dunsborough Regional School Committee, according to Town Council's opinion. I forwarded that to the Selectmen, somebody forwarded it to the Chairman of the School Committee, and the School Committee Chairman has asked for an opinion of their District Council. I have not received that yet.
And what if their District Council disagrees? Then we've got our, our Council talking about, alleging that the school district is neither entitled to submit articles?
They're entitled to submit, but you have to accept them.
Right. So that they're sufficiently independent that we do not have to accept them as an internal.
Correct.
Body. So what if their, their Council suggests that they are a body according to our definition? Then where do we go?
I'd say ask the AG, ask the AG for their opinion.
Well, I'd ask the two Councils to talk about it and figure out if there's a reason for the discrepancy.
I would like the AG's determination on what is a multi-member body.
Yeah.
But meanwhile, the warrant is going to close on Thursday of this week. And we are not meeting between now and then, but we are meeting Wednesday night. But do we think that Groton-Dunsborough School Committee?
They have submitted an article.
They have submitted it.
Correct. And that article will be on the warrant. And as a matter of fact, it was sponsored by Selectmen Peas. But the way it works, Becky, is when I get all the, the warrant closes, the Board doesn't see that. It's scheduled for you to look at the warrant for the first time on September 11th, and then you have the public hearing on September 18th. So September 11th is when you see what was submitted and you get the first draft of the warrant, because it takes me more than two days to take all those articles, put them in, check them out, get them to Town Council, have Town Council review the warrant, come back to me with his edits, and then get it to the Selectmen.
And then we need to order them as well.
Right.
I mean, Mark typically orders them in the order that he thinks is the way they should go down at town meeting. And if you have any opinion about what order they should go on in, that you're free as a Selectman to offer that, and we can reorder that.
I just want, would like to make a statement, though. I really don't care what the lawyers say. We and the School Committee are in this together, and I would hate to see us even broach the possibility of saying, no, you can't submit articles, or we're gonna reject articles that you submit for a special town meeting. I just think that that would be very bad policy.
The Board of Selectmen, in the nine years I've been here, have never once rejected an article from any Board of Committee. Not one time.
Barry?
So, but even though the warrant closes, when, I'm sorry, warrant closes Thursday, we still are, have the ability to open the warrant at a later date to include something that arrives later and then close it subsequently. So we have the ability to, on a case-by-case basis, allow for something to be entered after that close date.
Up to a certain date, when it has to go to a certain date.
There's a pretty date, I mean, there's a drop dead date, clearly.
But you don't have to open the warrant if you don't want to.
Right, but we don't have to.
Regardless of who submitted it.
So what it is, is during this period of, of public open, we have to accept everything that comes in from those four sources, plus anything we, you know, we think and, you know, whatnot. After that point, there is a discretion, because the warrant's not open. We don't have to receive something if the warrant's not open unless we choose to open it. Now, again, why would we not? But that's, that's, that's nothing here nor there.
Okay.
Alrighty?
Thank you.
So, under Other Business, we have a discussion on how to address interest in Groton as a location for cultivating and dispensing marijuana. And Jack, do you wanna guide us through this since you brought it to me?
Yeah, we had a letter almost 20, half a year ago or so, Mark?
Yep.
From, I forget the entity, asking whether or not.
Revolutionary Marijuana Dispensary.
Asking if we'd be interested in hosting a medical marijuana facility. Mark and I went to the town of Grafton and met with their town manager to learn more about it. There are some financial incentives to towns for doing this. And so we agreed that we would reconsider this after our town meeting article passed or didn't pass. And then it made some sense to see about what, how state laws went down, although the state laws more recently have been about recreational marijuana than medical. But we nonetheless vowed to take it up again. I then was contacted by a resident in town who's here today, Mr. Green, who is familiar with a lot of these issues and is interested in proposing a recreational marijuana facility here in town. So Josh and Mr. Green and I met, had some correspondence just to get a sense for what he's looking for. And so the, the purpose of this item on the agenda is just to ask ourselves, is this something that we want to start considering? And how would we like to start considering it? We can ask Mr. Green for more information tonight, or we can kick off a process that sort of is methodical in terms of our learning about this and deciding which way we'd like to go. The purpose of this agenda item is just to ask ourselves what we'd like to do.
Very good. So, with that said, as Jack alluded to, I had a meeting with Mr. Green and Jack very early in the summer, where we talked about how the state of Colorado operates for growing facilities and how communities can receive tax revenue, in addition to tax revenue, excuse me, and negotiated terms from someone who wants to engage in such a business that can help significantly offset some budget woes, and that it has been used successfully in other communities. And it's something worthy of talking about, looking at, because like it or not, it's been approved by the Legislature, and it's gonna get grown somewhere. And that's the discussion we had. So.
So I suggest that we sort of ask ourselves, are we interested in talking about this, or do we simply not want to talk about it at all? If we are interested in talking about it, then we should probably set the groundwork for how to do that. So I guess I'd first ask this Board, are we interested in talking about this item, this kind of, this issue?
Becky?
Can somebody refresh my memory? I think there was something at town meeting, and wasn't, at the state level, isn't there some sort of moratorium, or are there some sort of guidelines being prepared?
So at Spring Town Meeting, we voted, the town voted on a moratorium, a temporary moratorium. And I don't know, for recreational, and I don't know when that expires.
June 30th, 2018, or if the Planning Board submits a zoning article to regulate it.
Right, so.
Whichever comes first.
This is all recreational.
And a zoning article.
All the, medical marijuana is in place.
Either way, yeah, either way, we, we need to have a town meeting warrant to change the moratorium. And Mark, without preview of me, the, I know I'm gonna see it September 11th, but do you currently see a Planning Board article?
My understanding is the Planning Board will not be submitting an article on marijuana at the spring.
So therefore, it's unlikely before town meeting.
In the spring.
2018.
Correct.
That we would even be able to, be allowed to consider a recreational spot. Not that I wouldn't want to, I'm always for, you know, let's set a framework in place, let's discuss what could be. I worry that that would be disingenuous, since we don't have that, the ability to tell somebody that, sure, that can happen here, because we don't know how town media's gonna vote.
But the moratorium didn't cover medical marijuana.
No, no, I'm talking recreational. What's been told to me is that the individual in the, is precluded, which is recreational.
There are two individuals, one for medical, one for recreational. And I don't believe that we, and I don't, I'm not advocating for something, but I want to be sure that we, that our moratorium precludes our adoption of something, but does not preclude our planning in the event that we are allowed to adopt.
I agree, and that's kind of what I'm saying. I mean, I want to make sure that in any way we do go forward, there's another pretense that we can set all this up, and at a lot of risk. And it could, you know, just go nowhere. I was, I've reached out back to Revolutionary, because they had contacted me right before Spring Town Meeting, and I haven't heard back from them. So they've gone silent to me. Now, I don't know if anybody else is, and that's for medical, excuse me. I don't know if anybody else is, or I know Mark, have you heard?
I reached out to them again, Barry, and I have not heard back. So I imagine they're no longer interested. I'm assuming that.
Mr. Green, do you have any comment?
Yes, question, Revolution, Barry, is that, are they are an applicant, I hear?
This is an applicant you're speaking of, that is applying for a medical license, correct? They're not already licensed?
They had approached us with interest about it, but they never came, never followed up after the town meeting vote in the spring of 2017.
So, but what I'm saying is they're not a current license holder looking to open up a facility here?
Don't know.
Okay. Rather significant.
Yeah, I don't know which, where they were in their process. It was, it was simply an inquiry of, and of, and they wanted to talk with me about it. And I know they, they had talked with other Selectmen potentially. So I said, sure, I'll talk about it. And then the town meeting happened, and I said, okay.
So I guess what Jack's question at this juncture is, and understand your point about the moratorium that's in place, Barry. But certainly, if the town of Groton were to consider allowing cultivation facilities within its borders, that the sooner you start talking about it, because this isn't gonna just happen, you need to set the regulations, where it can happen, what the security levels are, what is the advantage to the municipality for hosting such a facility? That, these are complicated questions. And that, you know, come June 30th of next year, presumably, not presumably, it's going to be able to be sold in stores, and those stores need a supply chain, just like a farmer who grows tomatoes needs to bring us to market. It's the same way.
I was waiting for your food analogy, thank you.
Well, I just did.
I know, I appreciate that, thank you.
And, and Mrs. Green is here. I don't know if you want to discuss this, or you're just here listening, but.
Whatever's the pleasure of the Board.
Well, if the Board has the pleasure to listen to Mr. Green, is that fine with you? Well, Mr. Green seems like a very appropriate name to be discussing this topic.
Heard that quite a bit. My background in the cannabis industry is in compliance and security. This is what I've done since 2012. I was an early applicant for a license in Massachusetts, and I hired the gentleman who wrote Colorado's laws and actually their regulations as well. He was my personal consultant. When I walked away from my bid because of Massachusetts basically going sideways in this initiative, he hired me for his compliance company. And I spent the next couple of years working directly with license holders in all legal states on their compliance concerns, as well as helping people who are in emerging states in their compliance concerns as well. So I've basically seen the good, bad, and ugly in every venue within the United States. I then went over to electronic security. I currently work with a firm that designs and implements security systems in these facilities. I'm actually an owner, part-owner of a facility in Nevada myself. But everything I've done has been in exactly the arena that would concern a town, which is how does this come to pass in a town? What, how does this facility integrate into a town without causing disruption? And how do you maintain accountability and transparency within a facility? So it seemed when Massachusetts passed legalization that it might be a good time to start looking at Massachusetts again for my own personal business interests.
So, Becky?
Are you a resident of Groton?
Yes, I am.
And, so, your interest is in growing? Is that, did I understand that?
Well, setting up facilities, I mean, the, in medical cannabis, as it stands, these facilities are what you call vertically integrated, which means that they grow what they sell. With recreational, they've gotten rid of that, which was a very smart thing to do. So you could have technically a recreational cannabis facility here that just cultivates and then sells their product wholesale to other facilities to sell, or you could have a facility that also sells here, or you could have both. So it's really for me trying to gauge what the interest level of the town would be in something like that.
So, just speaking, without really having given much thought to this, because I didn't understand why we were gonna discuss this tonight, if and when we got to the point of actually considering this, I would want information about what is already happening in the towns that abut us. Because I think there's a danger sometimes that we, you know, we sit here and we make some, we deliberate and make policy, and, and then it turns out that we're just sort of surrounded by other places that are doing things totally different. So I think we ought to know what's happening.
Yeah, that's a common problem in the cannabis industry. I know that there's gonna be a good-sized facility going in Littleton, because I know the engineer is designing that. Tomorrow, I go and look at a million square feet in North Andover that is going to be applying for a license. So it's, it's coming.
But medical marijuana facilities already exist in places, right?
Yes and no. Legalization in Massachusetts happened, in my opinion, because Massachusetts was unable to launch a workable medical industry. We had, I think as of right now, we have 12 facilities in Massachusetts. This is five years into our program.
And what's the closest one to Groton?
Air.
Yeah.
Not that I know that for personal reasons, just.
Yeah, it's air.
Well, I thought I saw something in the news, in the local newspaper, that there is a medical marijuana facility in the air.
Yes, there is.
So, for the future, if you or anyone else was coming before us, I would be interested to have that data provided as part of, part of the process.
Sure, of course.
Also, Becky?
I think so.
Allison?
I mean, for me, and I will say that I've been on a professional side, working on permitting and engineering and designing in conjunction with a cultivation team and such there. So I'm fairly familiar with a lot of the pieces of this. I think that this is, is something that although it has to be done responsibly and logically, that there's a tremendous upside for our community, you know, moving forward to potentially being part of this, or working collaboratively rather than kind of making it a really difficult process. I, I think that we have a, is a community a long history of agriculture, and it's certainly worth exploring. I'm very comfortable with it.
I certainly think that this is going to happen, and what you touched on last is what's really important. You know, what agriculture was years ago in Groton was, you know, growing apples and growing other things. Well, somebody's gonna grow.
Hops.
Well, okay, well, hops, well, this is.
Hops was a big crop in Groton.
Hops is in the cannabis family.
Well, this is a different kind of hops. So, they put a little more spring in your stuff. So, they put a little more spring in your step. But at any rate, needless to say, it's important that we maintain, as our seal above us shows, that we have an agricultural legacy, and anything that can keep that agricultural legacy continuing here in town, I think is something worth exploring. Granted that the security levels have to be at a very high level, and the accountability has to be at a very high level. And having those things in place, and understanding what those are, and understanding what kind of money can be generated, not just from the growth of this product, but to the town as well as to the owners, over time, is what we need to discuss. Because if it's going to happen somewhere, and we can offset our budget on a significant level, then we certainly should consider, you know, citing a facility like this within the town.
And it's, it's more than that, I mean, the citizens of Groton voted, that they, you know, majority, excuse me, that, that they were in favor of this, and so we would also be doing a service to our constituents who seem to approve of this happening. Now, we don't know that they approved it statewide, not thinking it would come to Groton, but, you know, we'll see that, and, and, you know, I find the wonderful challenges of when it comes to your backyard, people change all of a sudden. I don't understand it, but it happens. So, I don't have a backyard, so don't worry about me. But, so let's, I, I encourage, I think Jack had asked, is there, is there an appetite to move forward and start a process, or start to create a framework whereby we can engage? And I think you've heard that there is, Jack, at least if I'm not speaking for everybody, but I've heard that. And so, where do we go from here? Do we form a subcommittee? Do we form an official committee? Do we just want to have some conversations one-on-one, what we want to do?
Well, we should work with the planning board, let's see.
This is different. Anything that you may want to negotiate, while the planning board certainly would have to approve the zoning for such a facility, I believe it currently exists, the zoning, already for something like this. And commercial agricultural operations are allowed. Now, while that occurs, maybe in place, what may not be in place is a recreational marijuana commercial growing facility, and I don't know if there's a nuance between the two.
Until, unless you regulate the zoning in the locations, it's allowed in any agricultural zone in town, the cultivating.
Wait, I thought we just passed zoning...
Medical.
That limits...
This is recreational.
Okay. We have a question for Mr. Lewis in the back.
Well, I am Richard Lewis, I live on St. Blue Road. As much as I am for free enterprise and agriculture, I think that you gentlemen should investigate this thoroughly.
Just the gentleman? Just Barry, Peter, and the three of us?
You gentlemen and gentlewomen should investigate this thoroughly, and make sure that you're on the right track, and that by non-doing something, it is not automatically assumed. And, just for the record, I'm against it. I've seen too many lives destroyed by this shit. Pardon the French.
I'm just trying to watch your language, I understand where you, I understand where you're coming from.
You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
I personally think the idea of having a couple of people assigned, whether they work as a sub, just a small group of the board, or in a larger group with some volunteers from the town who understand these things, makes a lot of sense. And Mr. Green initially came saying that, you know, I know a lot about this industry, if you're interested in learning about it, I'm glad to be a resource to you. His continued involvement tended to move more towards actually a potential proposal to us, but there are other, so I don't think we would necessarily want to work on an official capacity with someone who could get bitter, although there might be an ad hoc or advisory position for someone like that, they've got a lot of knowledge. But there, we could go into our, to our town and find out what kind of knowledge is available, and I think probably stand up a reasonable group of people who could help us to understand this as a board, and, and eventually as a community.
I certainly think that a working group consisting of a member of the board of selectmen, a member of the board of health, the police chief, the town manager, the land use director, would be a good start to have a discussion about moving this forward. But certainly having the expertise of town council, specifically maybe somebody like Sharon Everett, or somebody who specializes in this zoning with KNP, should really have that discussion to move it forward, because I think the rest of us are just speculating and guessing, and this is something you don't want to guess about, because if we're going to do it, we really want to do it right. So, that's...
Does the board want to designate a selectman to work with me to start this process?
I'd like to officially volunteer either Barry or, or Allison, Barry for his business background, and Allison for her specific industry background. I apologize, because I brought this forward, but, but I just have, I don't feel like I can contribute much to this.
You've done this?
Allison has both business and...
You've done this?
...permitting experience. She's honestly a better resource than I am.
Add to list.
No, I'm not...
We'll talk about a lot more things.
If you're willing to do it... Whatever you want to get together, the rest of us are just guessing. If you've done this professionally, I think that's huge.
Absolutely.
Allison, if you don't want to do it, I'm happy to...
No.
And so what, do we agree, is there agreed upon makeup of this?
What do you think about what I suggested with...
I think somebody from the board of health, definitely.
Board of health.
Somebody from the planning board, without question.
Planning board, as well as...
Allison, myself, you definitely want the police chief involved, and you definitely want the town plan involved.
And you might even want the fire chief involved.
Is he going to put out the fires caused by the...
Well, I don't know, but you just, you might.
It sounds like, uh, police...
So where do we get industry knowledge from?
Let's, Allison, help us get that.
Does it make sense, Mark, to start with kind of you having a meeting with as many of those folks as you can? I'm a little bit concerned about whether we want to appoint this as a group that then is bound by open meeting law, or whether we want this to be kind of a...
This could be my, this could be my working group, it is very subject to the open meeting law.
Exactly.
I, I would say wait till you have something ready for prime time, and then...
That's, I just wanted to raise that.
We're just investigating things and figuring things out, going down the road of understanding what's out there.
And so, since you're kind of an ad hoc group, you can invite local residents or invite expertise to come and give you information as you wish, right?
All right, so you'll report back to us. Anything further on this?
Is there a timeframe when you want this back to the board, like tomorrow?
Allison said she'd get it in a week, that's what I heard.
Is there a timeframe? The harvest moon.
Next week, right?
You're funny, Josh, that's good.
How about the next...
Mr. Chairman, liaison reports.
Liaison reports, anyone?
Does anybody hear the month of August?
So the, on the, relative to the nonprofit council, Josh and I got an email from...
Neil Kent.
Neil Kent, from the Si Temple.
Yep.
And Neil Kent has asked to meet with us to talk about, let me just read his quote, to discuss charitable activities the Si Temple can do which benefit the community at large. So Josh and I will meet with Neil Kent, I forget when that's scheduled, but it's coming up.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah. And I wanted to be sure the board was aware of that, so that you knew about it. Josh has invited his wife to join us. I'm a little concerned about that, because I, I think the, the Si Temple has reached out to the town, I'm, I'm not sure of the relevance of having Amy join us. I've discussed this with Josh, and we sort of have a disagreement as to whether or not that's appropriate.
Well, I'll, I'll explain that since you brought it up. Groton has an interfaith council, and my wife serves on the interfaith council, as well does Neil Kent and, and everyone else, and in his email that he sent to us, he talked about charitable opportunities that the church, the temple, excuse me, could offer. He didn't say to the town, he said to the community, okay? So the community is not just the board of selectmen, the community is represented as well by the interfaith council. So I suggested that she attend, Neil Kent jumped at it and said, absolutely. Jack is somewhat apprehensive about it, I'm not. I'd be willing to meet with him with or without her, but based on what the board's reaction is, as to this, I'd be curious to hear what you all think about that.
So just to make the argument that the community does indeed represent the interfaith council, it also represents National River Watershed, and people who represent, who are interested in National River Watershed, the Prescott School, our educational environment, the community represents many things. This, this invitation went out to the board of selectmen with whom, and, and the temple is aware that we would like to discuss a pilot at some time. My, my opinion is that the invitation went to the board of selectmen, the board should handle and understand what the request really is all about, we have very little other than a quick email, and then reach out to various entities if it's appropriate. At this point, I don't know why we wouldn't invite anybody who's interested, who feels they could benefit from a, from charitable contributions to join us. If we're going to invite one third party, then we should invite many.
Well, then, it looks like Jack and I will be meeting, and you guys don't need to discuss it, and if he wants to reach out to other organizations, he can do so on his own.
I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Then I think we've resolved the issue.
Great.
You want to vote on it? It's okay, it's okay.
I'm, I'm happy, I think it's a really nice thing, and I also believe in some good directions that will include other groups.
Very good. So we'll update this board on what comes of the meeting tomorrow night, and we'll move on from there.
Liaison reports continue, Mr. Kent.
Anyone else have any further reports to offer? Seeing none, we have regularly scheduled meeting minutes on the 17th, the 24th of July, as well as August 7th. If you all have reviewed them and have changes, please let us know. If not, entertaining motions.
I move we approve the regularly scheduled minutes from the meeting of July 17th, 2017.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move we approve the meeting minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of July 24th, 2017.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of August 7th, 2017.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I move that we approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes of August 7th, 2017.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing nothing else on our agenda...
Before you adjourn, just...
It's a decision about...
Oh, next Tuesday. Well, you have to make that decision, and Judy just informed me Marion Stoddard's husband passed away last Friday.
Thursday.
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 For the board's information.
I was not aware of that. Hugh Stoddard was a very good man, and did a lot for the community, and condolences certainly should go out to Marion and her family, so, sorry to hear the news. Thank you for letting us know.
And then whether or not you want to meet next Tuesday? At this point, I didn't hear a real answer.
It doesn't sound that we have, we don't need to meet if there's nothing to meet about. So our next meeting will be September 11th.
Yep.
And from then on, we will be meeting every Monday.
Your schedule, unless the board decides not to meet.
And we are also meeting Wednesday of this week, two nights from now, and Wednesday the 13th, for the school district summit.
Correct, with the school summit.
Maybe it's nice to make, take next Tuesday off.
Yes.
Yes, because we will have a big meeting, of a few of them. All right, that's it.
Mark, what were we, when were you thinking of meeting with Bud?
I'm going to send you off some dates tomorrow.
US, December.
About Tuesday morning?
Well, you should say Tuesday morning, next Tuesday.
Because we talked about that earlier, right?
Next Tuesday morning, is that what I meant?
Okay, seven?
Seven o'clock, finally.
Jesse, your office?
My office.
Excellent. So, now we are adjourned.
Excellent, we don't have to vote on that.
No, you don't.